Today is Wednesday, October 22nd. The time is 6:30 PM and I am calling this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order and we will now say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, trustee Cusamano.
Here.
Trustee Lucido.
Here.
Trustee Papa.
Here.
Trustee Oliver is absent, treasurer Gillette.
Here.
Clerk Posey here, supervisor Viviano.
Here. Moving on to approval of the agenda, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido to approve the agenda as presented, members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to approval of the bills.
Motion to approve?
Support.
Any questions or discussion on the bill run? Hearing none, motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Papa to approve the bills, members please vote.
Sorry about that delay, guys.
It's all right. Motion passes unanimously. And moving on to approval of the previous meeting's minutes from October 8th.
So moved?
Support.
Any questions or discussion on the previous meeting's minutes? Hearing none, motion by trustee Papa, supported by trustee Lucido to approve the previous meeting's minutes from October 8th, members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. That'll take us to our first public comment. If there is anyone present who wishes to make a public comment, they may do so now. I do not see anyone making a move, so we are going to move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move, I move the consent agenda in its entirety?
Support.
Is there any question or discussions on the consent items? Hearing none, motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido to approve the consent agenda, motion, members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, we're going to take us to item 10. This is a public hearing for the street lighting SAD for Moniker State Site Condominiums, Phase Four. Mr. Van Tifflin, you want to give us a little background before I open the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members, this is a brand-new development. The township ordinance requires street lighting for all new developments. This is the public hearing that we need to have in order to set up the special assessment district so that the township can pass along the lamp charges that we get from DTE.
Thank you. So at this time, I am opening the public hearing, the time is 6:33 PM. If anyone from the public wishes to make a comment on this proposed SAD, they may do so now. I don't see anyone from the public who wishes to make a comment. So I am going to close this public hearing, the time is 6:34 PM. Okay, this is going to take us to the postponed item, this is unfinished business, postponed from September 24th and then again from October 8th. This is a request to adopt the hard cap cost share model resolution as set forth in the publicly funded Health Insurance Contribution Act as presented. I will need a motion on that item in order to advance this for discussion.
So moved.
Support.
So I'll kick this off. We postponed this for the last two meetings because we were poring through the numbers for our health care plan options for the township. The packet included a breakdown of potential arrangements, so there is the current health care system, I'm just going to go over the columns that are on this particular document. There is a renewal that's under the hard cap, and again, this is all in the board packet. A renewal if we were to adopt the 80-20 model, which is part of the legislation as an option. And then there is a proposal here, which is, which I'll get to in a minute. The intention of the board has been since, really since I started, when we began adopting the hard cap, was to follow the intent of the legislation and move towards a model where the township wouldn't necessarily bear 100% of the burden of all health care costs. We were able to do so, keep the cost to the employees to a minimum by reorganizing our health care options, moving to a higher deductible plan, and keeping the expense to the employees at zero or near zero for the first few years, and then a few years ago, they started sharing in the deductible costs. There has not yet been a time when the employees have been asked to pay out of pocket until they are a user of the health care services, in which case they contribute towards their deductible. And we do that through contributions to an HSA. Last year, that contribution was about 40, a little, little under 48% of the deductible. Under both the health, the hard cap model for this year and the renewal at 80-20 model for this year, the burden that would be put on the employees is significant and abrupt. We never intended for such a dramatic change to happen in one year, we intended this to be a gradual. We always knew that the premiums and the hard cap would merge, would come together at some point in the future, but we thought by reorganizing the plans that that would be many years down the road and there'd be a long adjustment period. Not only are we stewards of the township's finances and tax dollars, but we are employers. We worked with our broker, who's here tonight, if anybody has any questions, to come up with a model that balances those two responsibilities, and that's how we came up with the proposal that's on the far-right column, if you have the documents. Under that proposal, we are suggesting that we opt out this year, that the township will continue to pay 100% of the premiums as we have done in the past years, but that the deductible amount, meaning that the amount we contribute towards each employee's HSA account, be reduced to 25% of the deductible instead of the 48% that we were paying before. And I put some notes in there that the premium, just so everyone knows, the actual premium increase over last year was 26.2%, and the year, so the, correct, that's the number, Jeff?
Last year was 34.2.
Right, and the previous year was 34.2. This year was 20...
26.99.
26.99, all right, I was a little under on my note. So altogether, we were nearly 60% increase, just in premium costs, for not changing the plan, for an already high deductible plan, just in two years. That's all the information, I think the proposal that I'm putting forward is fair, and I think it's fair to the employees, township is absorbing a significant amount of the costs, but we're not absorbing all of it. And with that, I will take any questions or open it up for more discussion.
Mr. Chair, if I may just confirm what I believe to be true, that four years ago, when we reorganized our health care, we were able to reduce our health care costs, maybe for the first time ever, by something along the lines of 14-point-something percent.
That's correct.
So we were actually paying less by 14%. Unfortunately, these two very significant increases in health care costs the last two years mean that I believe we'll be paying, if we adopt this proposal, about 3% more than we paid four, five years ago. I believe that's an accurate figure. So, that's the silver lining, the downside is these increases are astronomical, that are being passed, you know, through the insurance companies. The silver lining, if there is any, is we, the reorganization minimized the impact of the hit that would have otherwise been much more significant.
I agree, those are all correct statements.
Well, I just, Mr. Supervisor, I would like to add to that, when we originally would look at these proposals, the hard cap and/or the 80-20 used to or could benefit the employees, whereas if those options were to be decided on today, it would be a detriment to them. And I believe the proposal that is in the packet is a great balance between our responsibilities as an employer and also making it the best benefit we can for the employees.
Both are going to end up paying more, both the employees and us, but that's the reality of the health care today, I guess.
With that being said, we have the ability to amend this motion to opt out of the hard cap cost sharing model and adopting the health care proposal that's being presented tonight, is that correct?
That is correct. Any other, go ahead, Pete.
If I could, I'd be willing to amend the motion to opt out. I just want to make a comment, though. I don't want to put any undue pressure financially on any employees of the township, they do a phenomenal job, and I know we can absorb some of this, but I just want to state that at some point, if this trend continues, there's going to come a time where we're going to have to make some even harder decisions than this.
Yeah.
This is already a big undertaking that we're going to have to do, and I can understand not putting it on them, but, you know, let's kind of set the record straight going forward that we may not be able to do this forever, so, you know, just keep that in mind.
Right, and I totally agree, and again, that was always the intention of adopting the hard cap model, that, that the premium costs and what we were able to pay, we knew that, that delta would narrow over time, and slowly, inch by inch, that we would begin to share in the costs, and that's what every private sector business does, very, almost, I don't know of any private sector businesses anymore that cover 100% of health care costs. That's just the norm. We are just trying to get there in a responsible and measured way, and it was never our intent to just suddenly thrust hundreds of thousands of dollars of expense onto the shoulders of the employees. But we, but you're right, that, that inch by inch, slowly but surely, but we are all going to have to pay more in health care costs as the trend continues. Hopefully, the trend will not continue as it has, but I don't really have any reason to believe it won't.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yep.
Is the motion tonight specifically then to exempt ourselves from the hard cap or not exempt ourselves from the hard cap? Or does it also include a proposal on how health care would be allocated?
So I would suggest, and I'm going to ask Mr. Thompson to confirm, that if the motion maker would be so predisposed, that we amend the motion to say, to opt out of the hard cap, or is it opt out of the legislation, right, Tim? PA 152?
Yeah, so yeah, so it's to opt out of the legislation, Act 152.
To opt out of PA 152 and to adopt the health care plan as presented in the board materials.
Do I need to repeat that, or can I just say I'm agreeable to that change?
Say so moved.
So moved.
And does the seconder agree?
I support.
Was it you or Pete?
Me.
Oh, sorry, I wrote in response. So that being the case, is there any discussion on the amended motion? Anybody else want to chime in? Motion by trustee Lucido, we have to, we'll call this still correct? Motion by trustee Lucido, supported by clerk Pose, motion by trustee Lucido, supported by clerk Posey, to opt out of the PA 51-152 and to adopt the health care plan as presented in the board materials. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, trustee Lucido.
Yes.
Trustee Cusamano.
Yes.
Trustee Papa.
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette.
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, that resolution is adopted.
Question? So on the voting, it shows voting yes to adopt the hard cap, still vote yes or?
It amended in the minutes.
In the minutes, will reflect the action that was taken.
Want to make sure what I'm doing here. Thank you.
Mr. Supervisor, I would just like to thank TMR, who's present tonight. These numbers were shocking to all of us, and immediately, we were in panic mode, and they spent a lot of time crunching numbers and putting ideas together to allow us to provide a package that balances our responsibilities and helping our employees to not incur such an expense, so I want to thank them for their, all their work on it.
I agree. Sorry you came all this way, we didn't ask you any questions. You can take Jeff for out for afterwards. All right, this'll take us on to item 12. This is a request to adopt the resolution for the SAD for Moniker State Site Condominiums, Phase Four. Is there a motion to approve?
Trustee Cusamano makes the motion to approve.
Support. Mr. Van Tifflin?
Mr. Chairman, board members, this is the resolution that is necessary to actually set up the special assessment district that we had the public hearing on earlier. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tifflin. That was part of the board materials, yeah? Sorry. Any questions or discussion, is there a motion yet?
Yes, Cusamano, supported by Gillette.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the SAD before we adopt it? Hearing none, motion by Cusamano, supported by trustee, or treasurer Gillette, to adopt the SAD for Moniker State Site Condominiums, Phase Four. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, trustee Cusamano.
Yes.
Trustee Lucido.
Yes.
Trustee Papa.
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette.
Yes.
Clerk Posey. Yes. Supervisor Viviano.
Do you want to ask her again?
Bye.
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Moving on to item 13, is a request to approve the purchase of security cameras for the DPW addition project from MCA in the amount of $14,000, in the amount of $14,006. addition project from MCA in the amount of $14,656.37. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Johnson?
All right. Good evening, Board. So, under the DPW addition project, there is a line item under the construction cost to cover the cost of the security cameras, but the purchase and installation of the cameras will be separate from the Quadrate contract who's performing the work. The DPW will be purchasing the cameras from MCA, who will coordinate with Quadrate when installing the cameras on the building. MCA is formerly Presidio, who is the vendor who we use for our cameras in our buildings. The confirmation or process memo was attached, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
Is there a system by which the cameras are checked to make sure that they're functioning, and will that be part of this purchase?
Yes. As they plug them in, we have our software program, and we'll test them along with Jason Lapari, our IT manager. He will be helping us with that.
So, there won't be any blackout areas like?
No. We've already gone through all the scoping, making sure it's hitting all the properties of the building and everything.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Anyone else?
Yes.
Yes.
I wasn't clear on this, this 15% discount, that arrangement that, I guess, that we have as member, tips members. What, can you explain that to me?
I would have to ask Jason Lapari. He's the one who gets the quotes and provides it. We go through him, so.
I think I can answer that, and Stacy maybe can confirm. We're buying these, it's through the, aren't we getting the cameras because we're in the, is the part of the cooperative?
Yes.
Yeah.
And because those were bid out, I think the percentages changed. It's not for all things, but for the cameras, I believe it was the 15%.
And I want to say it was like the Oakland County Schools and government union.
Yeah, I'm not sure which contract under tips it was with, but, yeah.
So, a lot of the cooperatives have built-in discounts for the services that are provided through them.
Gotcha. Okay. Great.
Anyone else? Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the purchase of the security cameras for the DPW addition from MCA in the amount of $14,656.37. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. And this will take us to the next item, request to award the rec center dumpster relocation project to Demambro Construction, $57,488.
So moved.
Support. Mr. Johnson?
All right. The township is looking to relocate the dumpster at the recreation center. The dumpster is being moved approximately 125 feet northwest of its existing location, allowing for more open and effective entrance for the precinct that utilized the rec center during elections. This also includes a demolition of the existing dumpster site. Twelve bids were received, and Demambro was the lowest responsible bidder. Confirmation or process memo is attached, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions or discussion?
One note, if I may. This is not just moving the dumpster, it's building the enclosure around the dumpster as well, of course.
Correct.
Thank you.
Boring the pad, replacing the concrete.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Papa, to award the contract for the dumpster relocation to Demambro Construction and for $57,488. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. This will take us to item 15, is a request to award the Town Hall ADA ramp and walkway project to Metropolitan Concrete in the amount $11,000.
Motion to approve?
Support. Mr. Johnson?
All right. This project is looking to replace the ADA ramp that's located at the northeast corner of Town Hall, near the door that Texas Assessing Department. The township did receive a grant of $10,000 towards this project, meaning that $1,000 will be covered by the township as a part of this project. The DPW obtained three quotes, Metropolitan Concrete being the lowest responsible bidder. The other two quotes were over $15,000. Confirmation or process memo is attached, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Kevin, when is the work slated to start if it's awarded tonight?
It would probably start as soon as possible. Chris will be in touch tomorrow to get that going.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, I'd just like to express my appreciation to our clerk for applying for and receiving the $10,000 toward this ADA ramp that would minimize the cost of the township. So, thank you so much for aggressively pursuing a grant that
Thank you.
...supports the taxpayers.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to award the ADA ramp reconstruction to Metropolitan Concrete for in the amount of $11,000. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 16, is a request to hire Mr. Benjamin Rice as our fire training officer.
Motion to approve?
Support. Mr. Tabaka?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board Members. I'm requesting authorization to extend an offer of full-time employment to Ben Rice for our open fire training officer position. This position was posted in compliance with the IAAF CBA agreement. HR received three applications for this position. Myself, Chief Phillips, and DC Monroe conducted the interviews, and our recommendation is Ben Rice. Ben has been working as a fire instructor with Oakland Community College, as well as a fire lieutenant EMS coordinator with Addison Township. He has the required certifications for the position and will be a great asset to our fire department. If approved, the effective date of hire will be sometime in November. Thank you, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the hiring of Mr. Benjamin Rice as our fire training officer. Members, please vote. Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
This will take us to item 17, is a resolution, a resolution adopting the Macomb County 2025-2030 hazardous mitigation plan. Motion to approve? Support. Chief?
Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, I'm requesting your approval of the resolution adopting the 2025 to 2030 Macomb County Hazard Mitigation Plan. The plan has been approved by the state, FEMA, and the county. The plan identifies preventing and mitigating man-made and natural disasters that may occur within the township and the county. Worked with the supervisor's office over the past 18 months as we updated the plan. As it says, the plan is 355 pages, which is why it was not included in the packet. If you would like to see a copy, I'd be more than happy to provide it. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Papa, to adopt the Macomb County 2025 through 2020 toward 2030 Hazard Mitigation Plan. Clerk Posey, we call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Supervisor. Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Papa?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviana?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Next item is a request to purchase Kenwood mobile radios from Spectrum Wireless in the amount of $68,194.4.
Motion to approve?
Support. Chief?
Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, I'm requesting your approval to purchase 12 Kenwood mobile radios for the fire engines, the heavy rescue, the ladder truck, utility truck, and the command vehicles. Current radios are 18 to 20 years old, and parts are no longer available. We did install two Kenwood radios and the two new engines that we just recently put into service, and they've been working extremely well. Pricing was obtained utilizing my deal, of which the township is a participating agency. Spectrum Wireless was awarded a competitive solicited contract through my deal. Purchase of the radios was involved in the current fire improvement budget and did include the process, confirmation of process memo. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions or discussion?
If I may.
Yes.
Chief, do you know what the, you mentioned that it was included in the budget. Is that approximately what the budgeted amount was for the radios, is included in the fire department budget you mentioned?
The budgeted amount was higher than what we're requesting this evening. Originally, our, all of our radios were Motorola. As we were doing some research, we discovered the Kenwood radios at about a 40% cost savings over the Motorola. So, that's why we tried the first two to see. They've worked perfectly fine, and so we went with the Kenwood on the remainder radios to save approximately 40%.
Great. Yeah, I used to have a Kenwood radio in my car, too, and it worked pretty good.
That was a Gremlin, though.
Yeah, I loved that thing.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the purchase of the Kenwood mobile radios from Spectrum Wireless in the amount $68,194.4. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Chief? And our next item, is item 19, is a request to approve a new polling location for Precinct Five. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support. Clerk Posey?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. As the packet reads, Public Act 88 of 2023 grants city and township election commissions the authority to increase precinct size limits from 2,999 to 4,999 registered voters. The Macomb Township Election Commission took advantage of this opportunity to save tax dollars and increase efficiency by consolidating precincts prior to the 2024 election cycle, down from 35 precincts to 24 precincts. Michigan election law requires the legislative body in each community to establish polling locations for use at all elections. In an effort to continuously improve the voting process for our residents, I would like to move the polling location for Precinct Five from Lance Cruz Middle School North to Lance Cruz High School North. Moving the polling location from the middle school to the high school will provide increased parking, a larger gymnasium, and improved logistics for a better voting experience. All registered voters in Precinct Five will be issued a new voter identification card to inform them of their new polling location next year. I'm telling you, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by Trustee Papa, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the new polling location for Precinct Five. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, and this will take us to our last agenda item of the evening. This is a request to extend grant writing services agreement with Team Row Inc. at an hourly rate. It's an hourly rate of $100 per hour, I will add. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
We have been using Team Row as our grant writer for the past number of years, as the board probably remembers. We started with a retainer arrangement where we were paying, I think it was $3,000 a month. We have, as we learned more about grants ourselves internally, my team specifically, Deputy Supervisor Clay Combe, has taken on a lot of the grant writing and grant responsibilities. However, Team Row has proven to be an invaluable partner, and we have been using them at an hourly rate over the past couple of years. We would like to continue to have them available to us when needed so that we continue to secure funding for the township. This is the exact same rate they have been charging us for the last couple of years, so there's no increase in hourly rate. We just need to extend the agreement. With that, I will take any questions.
Just one question.
Yes.
Do we know approximately how many hours we paid for last year?
Last year, we spent $11,700 with Team Row, but a large part of that is because Deputy Supervisor Clay Combe took an extended leave, so we had Liz filling in, checking on all of the progress on our grants. So, normally, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't have been that much.
Got it. How many grants does that translate to roughly? Do we know?
I don't know. I think we've applied in the last year for at least half a dozen.
Okay.
And we've gotten some big ones. We just were awarded a TAP grant for 2.6 million. While Jody did lion's share of the work, I think she did, you know, Liz has some experience in writing our other TAP grant that we were awarded, so she, again, she called on Liz to help her fine-tune the application. Any other questions? Hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to extend the grant writing services agreement with Team Row at an hourly rate of $100. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Board. All right, this will take us to our second public comment of the evening. This is for non-agenda items, or any item in particular. Anyone who wishes to make public comment may do so now at the podium. Now, I don't see anyone present. So, we're going to move on to board comments. Trustee Lucido?
Just congratulations to our new fire training officer. Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Lucido. Trustee Papa?
Yeah, same here. Congratulations to Benjamin Rice. Welcome aboard, and thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Papa. Trustee Cusmano?
No comments tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Treasurer Gillette?
Also, congratulations to Mr. Rice. I appreciate you joining the team here in Macomb Township. Also, congratulations to our Parks and Recreation Department for putting together a really great Halloween hoopla event, which was enjoyed by hundreds of children and was a great time last week, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Clerk Posey?
Congrats to Mr. Rice and welcome to our fire department. Again, mirroring Treasurer Gillette's comments, the Parks and Recreation Department now did theirselves with the Halloween hoopla. They had an amazing trunk-or-treat event in the parking lot and then a ton of activities inside the rec center. So, congratulations to them for another successful event. However, I think Treasurer Gillette enjoyed himself the most.
It was a lot of fun.
He liked his hot dogs, and I remember that. Thank you, Clerk Posey. Again, with everybody else, congratulations, Mr. Rice. We look forward to having you here on a full-time basis and, you know, expanding that role in the fire department even more so, so. Yes, the Parks and Rec Department did a great job. I believe the number reported, we have more than 900 of our residents come through with adults and children. It was great to see all the costumes and see all the excitement. We gave away more stuff than, God, we went through, the first hour, we just poured through candy and giveaways and light-up rings, so, great event.
Motion to adjourn.
I wasn't done talking.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
I just want to remind everybody that Halloween is coming. We know that. The township, every year, we get calls to find out what time Halloween officially starts. Fire department gets calls every year. The township does not dictate what time you send out your children for Halloween. However, the traditional time is about 6:00 PM. You may hear a siren go off from the Shelby Township side of the world that is not ours, that is theirs. They do that at 6:00 PM on Halloween, so, good luck, everybody stay safe. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One other thing, and I know it's short notice because it's tomorrow, but there's the Fire Buddies.
Oh, that's right. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, thank you.
At Bubba's, they're, so, all day long, I believe, if you go in there and let them know that you're, you know.
Bubba's on Hall Road, right?
Yep.
Bubba's on Hall, yeah. Please, if you, if you haven't yet already, please look up Fire Buddies. It is a charity that our fire department is partnering with, and, yes, tomorrow, all